Now, call the county court people order. The Commissioner Slavin will do these in.
Stand by your decks please. Having all the thinking in this family, just ask your guidance and wisdom with the sermon on the decisions that you can be making in the county. Just ask a special blessing for each commissioner of the family and everyone that's here. Just ask that we conduct this meeting, it'll be in order for you. Ask these things in your name.
Okay. Attention, float pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, first, please call the ladies.
Graham.
Here.
Mark.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Edward.
Here.
Ross.
Dave.
Jeffrey.
Here.
Lyles.
Here.
And Glitter.
Here.
Mayman.
Here.
New Ford.
Phillips.
Here.
Russ.
Slavin.
Okay, Chairman. Unfortunately, we have a resolution to honor Mr. George Roarke due to his health and his mobility. He's unable to be here, and the family had to come without him, and I understand that totally, but I thought if it's okay with you, we would go ahead and read it and pass it, and then you can take it out and edit it into a photo, present it to the county and answer it. That's all right. You know, so I'll read this resolution. Whereas by this resolution dated July 17, 2017, this Scott County Board of County Commissioners wishes to honor George Roarke for his many years of outstanding service to this country and his community. Whereas George was born in Oneida, Tennessee on February 22, 1924, to the parents of Boyd and Stella Phillips Roarke. George has three brothers and one sister, Delby, Paul, me, James D., and Estelle. Whereas George married his loving wife, Dolores Terry, on June 8, 1956, in Windville, Tennessee. They were married forty-one wonderful years before her passing on December 9, 1997. Whereas a couple of four children, Terry and wife Mary Ann of Oneida, Lisa and husband Ronnie of Kingston, Tennessee, Beverly and husband Trippie of Oneida, Tennessee, Susan and husband Anthony of Oneida, Tennessee. Whereas George began serving his country in the United States Navy in his distinguishing career on July 29, 1942. During the course of his service, George earned numerous medals, including Euro, African, Eastern Campaign Medal, thirteen Bronze Stars, American Victory Medal, World War II Medal, Good Conduct Medal, Commendation to World War II Medal, Patriot World War II Medal issued by the Russian government. Whereas George has owned and operated a successful business in Oneida, Tennessee, Roarke Service Station for the past sixty-five years. At age ninety-three, George is still working six days a week at the station. Now that's what we resolve this Scott County Board of County Commissioners, the county mayor, Dell Perdue hereby honor George Roarke for his successful year's service to this country and its community. Make the motion to adjourn that resolution. Voting on voice vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, first on the agenda, we have approval for minutes from June 19, 2017. But any who book lead, voting on or the other thing is to get. Motion approved.
I'll sit.
Okay, voting on voice vote to approve the minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have non-missioned, no re bond, and approvals. First, we have Charles C. Miller, Denise Miller. Probably one, but then for a few. Over. Then we have the charity bond, Brian Saint Western, charity company, Brian Sexton, K. Sexton, Deborah G. Griffith, charity bond company of America, Cora Queener, Estelle Chipwood, auto owners insurance company, Mary Ellen Keaton, personal charity, Annie, Anna, or Mary. Entertainer motion.
I'll make that last thing.
Okay. Second, chat. Voting on voice vote? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. See, next we have the financial reports, monthly, quarterly, and annual. Annual reports, trust fee, register of deeds, circuit court, sessions court, Chancery Court, and county court. Okay. Then we're in your book lead.
I'll sit.
Okay, moving.
I'll sit.
Okay, voting on voice vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have school matters. Mr. Hall's in here. Do you have someone for Moina? I see she's coming up to the vote. Go ahead. Any hat there?
I just want to do a real quick report. And at Oneida, we currently have all of our staffs in place except for one, and we could be just set up hopefully this week. Budgets are being finalized from the federal and state level, so trying to get a program out. Right now, we're working on getting supplies and buildings in working order. You all know how that is. Floor stripped, make sure everything's fixed. Buses, that's been always a nightmare, but we've got everybody in place for that. Athletics, everything's lined up, and just want to let you know we're getting ready for the new year. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the sheriff's report. Do you want to hear from the sheriff department? Do you want to speak? Okay, everything's going good. All right. Okay, next we have road matters. I had talked to Dick Sexton today, and he said he was down with some kind of cold or flu, pretty sick, so I didn't figure he would be here. He didn't tell me he wouldn't. Okay, so moving on to the general public. Do you want to hear from the general public that would like to speak?
Probably not the public, but I'd just like to. I didn't get to do my report last time on the litter, cause I didn't have it ready because Tim was on vacation. So I just wanted to report to you on the litter for last month. They did sixty-seven miles last month, and they done nineteen thousand, six hundred pounds of litter. This is actually from the one I sent in fifteenth of the month, this happened about that, because I've already got them. And we did one dunk, we did it on Ben Smith Road, they corrected. So I just wanted you all to know what we done last month. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to committee reports and resolutions. First on that, the parks and recreation. Chair, Mr. Chadwick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Scott County Park and Parks Committee was called on June 3, 2017, at 6:00 PM by King Chadwick Chairman. Members present, King Chadwick, Sheila Votren, Jim Jeffers, Rick Rutter, Sam Smith, members absent, Chairman Martin, Mr. Righty. I had a discuss announcement for the groundbreaker for the John Lanza World, reschedule for July 6, 2017, 5:30 PM. Had motion by Mr. Jeffers and second by Sheila Votren to adjourn the meeting for now. I'll make a motion.
I'll sit. Voting on voice vote? Put those to record. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, moving on to emergency service committee. Chairman Phillips.
Can you talk about that for me at night? I'll go ahead, yes, sir. If you would do your own, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Okay. Scott County Emergency Service Committee was called to order at July 3, 2017, 6:14 PM by King Chadwick Acting Chairman. Members present, King Chadwick, Rick Burke, and long, Ed Wood Day, Patty Brown, members absent, Ernest Phillips, John McBrum. First thing was Scott County Order from TRM spoke to Scott County Commission about ankle trauma. Had motion by Rick Burke and second by Sam Lyles to adjourn the meeting for now. I'll put a motion to approve.
Okay, voting on voice vote? Put those to record. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, next, moving on, the buildings and grounds committee, Chairman Russ, and I know he isn't here. I'm reading along back there. Take that on.
Members present, Rick Russ, Sam Lyles, Rick Burke, Eric Newport, Sheila Votren, members absent, Robin Newman, and Robin McBrum. Members called order 616 by Rick Russ Chairman. Community members proceeding to be at the old Scott County Jail to review. Motion by Sam Lyles, second by Eric Newport to adjourn the meeting. Voting aye, all present.
Motion to approve, man. Okay, voting on voice vote? To approve the minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, next, moving on to the community development committee. Chairman Newman.
The community development committee was called to order at 6:20 PM by Rick Russ Acting Chairman. Members present, Rick Russ, Eric Newport, Jim Jeffers, Sheila Votren, members absent, Robin Newman, Trent Cross, Mike Slavin. No action was taken. Motion by Eric Newport, second by Sheila Votren to adjourn. Voting aye, all present.
Entertainer motion. Okay, voting on voice vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, next on the agenda is budget committee. Chairman Cross, somebody called, said he called and said he was sick and he wouldn't be here. Anyone? I know there was no action taken on the first one, but I think we call a special budget meeting. Is that right?
Yeah, I agree. Scott County Special Call Budget Committee, July 14. Members present, Trent Cross, Rick Russ, Mike Slavin, Robin McBrum, members absent, Patty Brown. Also present, Ginger Rinn, also finance director, Dell Perdue, Mayor Sheila Votren, Jim Jeffers, Sam Lyles, King Chadwick, all county commissioners. Community Call Order 1108, PM. Vote should be AM by Trent Cross. Chairman. Motion by Rick Russ, second by Mike Slavin to recommend the tax rate of $2.494. $2.494 cents for the fiscal year seventeen eighteen budget. Voting yes was Rick Russ stating conflict of interest to Mike Slavin, Robin McBrum. Voting no was none. Did Trent Cross vote on that also?
Used to be a common president.
So Trent Cross also voted yes. Motion number two, motion by Mike Slavin, saying by Rick Russ to recommend the fiscal year seventeen eighteen budget to Scott County Commission. Voting yes was Rick Russ, Mike Slavin, Robin McBrum, and Trent Cross. Voting no, none. Motion by Robin McBrum, saying by Rick Russ to adjourn the meeting. Voting aye, all present.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the question.
Okay, voting on voice vote? To approve the minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll call it a special call budget meeting, August 7, after the workshop. Work session. Be a full commission meeting to approve the budget for seventeen eighteen. It will be right after the work session. Full commission, special call meeting for adoption, for consideration and adoption of the budget. August 7. Right after the work session. Okay, moving on to the general governmental committee. Chairman Cross, but he's not here. If you have anyone want to read that.
King was there, you want to do it? General Government Committee, July 3, 2017. Members present, King Chadwick, Patty Brown, David Green Day, Jim Jeffers, members absent, Trent Cross, Mike Slavin, and Ernest Phillips. Minutes Call Order 624 by Chairman, King Chadwick Acting Chairman. Discussion over the list of covered bridge road. Number two, motion by Blue Day, second by Patty Brown to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, voting on voice vote? To approve the minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, moving on to the finance committee. Chairman Slavin.
Of course, Department of Finance Committee. Last month, we awarded a bid on janitorial bids, Elston Janitorial. And I think after we did that Scott Janitorial, they're here tonight, I think they had reviewed some of the bids and some of the quantity, some of the cost per unit, and their bid was around fifteen hundred dollars. Is that correct?
It was about nineteen hundred.
Nineteen hundred dollars above Elston. So I told them I would bring them before the commission to see if they wanted to take some kind of action. We have this local company here. As we enter this committee, whatever. Y'all would like to say, you're welcome to come up front.
My name is Mona Dießinger. I'm Scott County Board. Triforce for me down here. I wanted to make you aware that we put back into the community about twenty-one thousand dollars by the time that I paid Theresa. I rent a place from the Brewsters. I buy all of my gas and all the repairs in the community. Plus, we do internet service, telephones. So it's not just the nineteen hundred dollars that we found that we were that close to the bid. We also do all of our business locally. If we don't get the bid back, I will have no reason to have that office in this community, and I will not have a reason to have Triforce working, so she loses her income. So overnight, a lot of our products are concentrated. We didn't get a chance to break those down, but we were bidding against ready-to-use products. So in essence, there could be quite a bit smaller variable on that deal, and I would like you to consider that. Anybody got any questions?
I don't understand, you all bid this every year, but yet we always come here at the end of that, and there's something different about the sizes or the quantities, and I don't understand if we had the bid sheet, how that happens. I mean, that's just me.
Now, we bid what was on the bid sheet, but when the prices were extended, we extended them out per case, but the opposing bid extended them out by the can, and that made us look like we were really high.
So what was on the bid sheet?
To do it by the case. And that's what we did. We did exactly.
We go back and we review. Bottom line is, they were the lowest bid this year, so they're still higher by nineteen hundred dollars, according to their records.
But of course, we have not been able, you can't compare concentrated products against ready-to-use either. Plus, now, and I am from Somerset, and our school bid will do what is the best lowest bid. So is it best that you lose twenty-one thousand dollars worth of somebody putting money back into your community, over nineteen hundred dollars, to somebody that would not be bringing that back into your community? I mean, I don't think that it's necessarily the cheapest is not always the best bid, because we did things that we know that the people in the school and the janitors desire to use. So we did not bid the cheapest item. We did what we know that they like using, they don't have any complaints, and so therefore we did the best product that would give you the best money, best product for your money. And that was, and again, we could have probably gotten the difference down lower, but just the time element of we would have to take those products. And I think if we did, that we could show that we were probably pretty even in costs, but yes, there's a significant difference in what I'm willing to put back into this community. I feel like I have done that for many years.
All right, anybody have any questions?
I have a question. And the board has said, can I?
I don't know.
The board has acknowledged that it needs. The finance committee has acknowledged there.
With our degree, why not? Elston is still the lowest bid. Yeah, and a lot of the problems that I can tell you, you all getting the products to the schools, and they don't have to wait. And you need to speak on this.
Well, I don't want to get into a war about that. I mean, I think, you know, either one would provide a great service. I mean, I'm not going to get into a, I don't want to become spied, you know, or get about that. I'm a principal at a local school, I can't speak for our principals, I can't speak for our schools and the system, and so I would rather not speak on that.
That's too bad for that. But that's what I, that's what I, you all getting the product to the.
All right. Okay. Any other comments?
Since they kept rolling over, and I'll wait since we at least give, you know, we take one from another county, and we get into, you know, we run into this thing before, and they, I think I like the people in our own community, to help them if they can. I know it's not all that, but I think they would have a shot here, you know. You get one can here, put a can over, so it's time to get out.
And we really do try to do everything local, even though I get trucks that I need serviced out of, I will get repairs here locally, instead of doing that even at our home office in Somerset.
Where is your home office?
My home office is in Somerset, Kentucky. But everything is handled at the home, and we have an office over it, that I rent from Brewsters. And we've been here a long time, and we really do try, I'm not saying that we're perfect with, we make a mistake, we always correct it, and we do try to deliver within the seven to ten working day delivery. There are some specialty orders that we have had to, but each and every time, I think we've eliminated the problem, and the janitors have not told us that they are unhappy. We have been told good things, and we sincerely want the bid. My advantage for getting the bid as far as my home office is, it just gives me more buying power to buy semi loans. I don't really take a lot from this, and I'd be more than glad to show anybody the records for that. My money goes back into what's down here and in the payroll, and I use this company and my company in Somerset as a combined buying power, so I can keep my prices low, both here and in Somerset. Monetarily wise, I do not take anything from this company, and I could disclose my bank records to anybody that would like to look at them.
Okay, all right. Any other questions or comments concerning this?
Thank you very much.
Finance Committee, members present, Mike Slavin, Ernest Phillips, Kenny Chadwell, June Jeffers, Bill Perdue, Bill Hall, members absent, also present, Ginger Rinn, financial finance director, Rick Rutter, EDC consultant, prom shoe maker, Hank Duvall, Joe Closey from the airport authority. Minutes Call Order, five full, Mike Slavin Chairman. Motion by Kenny Chadwell, second by Bill Hall to open the bids. Voting aye, all present. Motion by Bill Hall, second by Ernest Phillips, to forward the bids on the airport behavior building to the Scott County Airport Authority Board. Voting aye, all present. Motion by Kenny Chadwell, second by Dick Sexton, to award the tire bid to the tire center of Knoxville. Voting aye, all present. Motion by Dick Sexton, second by Dell Perdue, to forward the proposal to the Scott County Commission to review for the county commission. Our resolution to increase the threshold over which public advertisement and sealed competitive bids proposals are required to an amount up to twenty-five thousand for non-emergency and non-ruptureous or preratory purchases in counties having centralized purchasing and a full-time purchasing, voting aye, all present. Number five, motion by Bill Hall, second by Kenny Chadwell to adjourn the meeting. Voting aye, all present. Voting on voice vote? To approve the minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolution here concerning the bid amount, and that, that motion was not a, that was to bring that before the full commission. That was not a recommendation filed by the finance committee. That was only to bring before the full commission. It says it doesn't say recommendation. Has been, has forwarded this proposal for both action and for consideration. So the way that raised, that said that the finance committee endorsed it?
No, the finance committee has forwarded this proposed action to the full commission for consideration. So I was very careful about that.
I was very careful about that.
I guess the bottom line is, the Finance Committee did not recommend this passage as which recommend bringing it to the full court, as the full courts consider. What it does, it takes the bidding process to ten thousand up to twenty-five thousand. And I don't think, now anything over ten thousand dollars has to be bid, this would take twenty-five thousand. That was a request from the whole- From the school. Go.
But it would be for every department.
Yeah, but if we pass it, it's, it's county law.
It'd be for every department, county law. They just have to bring to us and get anyone, because we're situated. It's all in them.
It's up to them. All right, I'll read the resolution, and it's up to them.
West, Tennessee Code added, and taken twelve that treaty, then twelve, twelve authorized county governments having centralized purchasing authority with a full-time purchasing agent, to increase the threshold over which public advertising and competitive bids are required to an amount up to exceed twenty-five thousand. Whereas the Scott County Governor and his governor under the Financial Management Act of nineteen eighty-one, which requires centralized purchasing, designates the finance director as the county's purchase committee. Whereas the Finance Committee has forwarded this proposed action to the full commission for consideration. Now that four bickers off, the Scott County Board of County Commissioners hereby approves the increase in the county's threshold of competitive bid and advertisement limit from ten thousand to twenty-five thousand for non-emergency and non-proportional purposes in accordance with the state law. In view of further resolution, it is offered that notwithstanding this action, Scott County Finance Department will seek at least three quill quotations wherever possible for purchasing, less than newly established bid limit in accordance with the state law and the county's adopted financial policy.
How's the, how's the quotation differ? Just call somebody?
Go out and advertise, you know, not, you know, you might contact individuals or an internet, or on the field, it has to be sealed.
You know, the quills, you do get the three quills, are they held to the same standard as the bid in the sense that you're required to take the lowest and invest in it?
Yes, state law requires that.
So, you get the three quills, they're the same. It's just the eyes will not be, as many eyes will not be on the quills, as would the bid. Because the bid becomes the finance, has to be approved through that, so, quills, so it's just a few people that are involved.
Okay, so, recommendations? Any questions?
I guess I see some problems.
Twenty-five thousand seems like an awful large amount.
Yeah. And what they do allow?
About twenty-four hundred bid, ninety-nine bids, one more.
Money will be there.
Whereas a ten thousand dollar bid worth of bid, if it's that, four or seven?
Finance Department has no problem with the ten thousand. This is not coming from the Finance Department.
Right, and what we got now is the work, is what I bet.
I agree with that, I think it's the same thing, too. I don't know, I'm tired, and I was both on the issue, but I do, I think it's too good to make a good time.
We'll move on, and come back up later, if we can, or something, we'll find out, we'll do a DJ, or something. Next thing in your package there is airport hangar results. I turn that over to Sam here.
You all recall, we passed a resolution to pay forty thousand, forty thousand dollars in matching funds for the new hangar out at the airport. We put in, the question of this, this came back last Monday for the Finance Committee. This was turned over to the airport authority and PDC Engineering Group for the airport. They looked at all the proposals, and they came back with their recommendation. You look at the letter, the first letter, they came back, and they recommended standing builders, general construct contractors, and they were the lowest bid, and they met all the criteria. So, they recommended that the airport authority, members of the airport authority met out at the airport this past Friday at ten o'clock. We reviewed PDC's recommendations, and from that, we decided that we would go with the recommendation for a standing build. And I also had it out the sheet here, was kind of getting the breakdown, what it's going to amount to, is the subtotal for the total bid was like six, two thousand, six hundred and twenty thousand, fifty-eighty-nine, and it has administrative costs, engineering costs, and then they added the projected total plus tallness, one and two, came out to seven, seven hundred and eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty cents. The grant money that we had was eight hundred thousand, which gave us a balance of eighteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-five, which we can apply at a later date, should we need to, at this point. If you had any questions, we've got some members of the hangar, airport authority slash hangar committee groups, and if you have any questions for them, what we're asking you to do tonight, rather than, we're asking you to go ahead as commission and pass this to award this to standing builders. And the reason we want to do that tonight is, if we wait and send it back to the Finance Committee and it's back to the commission, we've lost the money. So, I appreciate it, if you could go ahead and vote for this tonight, and let them move on, because we all know it gets cold around here, we try to kind of, we kind of slow if we want to get things going.
All right, you heard the law's recommendation to your motion, that we award this to standing builders?
I understand.
I'll say it. The motion, and then second. Voting on broke all votes.
Aye. Aye. Bar. Aye. Patrick. Aye. Chadwell. Aye. Jeffers. Aye. Laws. Aye. McRae. Aye. Newman. Aye. Phyllis. Aye. Slaven.
I'm sorry, I didn't take over, but I don't, I didn't need to take over there.
You did.
All right, I think that's all I have on the Finance Committee.
Okay, moving- Okay, moving on, is there any other matters that need to come before the county court?
I have a question, Mr. Bailey. It's, no action's taken on moving the bids from ten to twenty-five, that resolution? Does that, that have to be go back to, and work its way back, or did they come back-
Bring it up at any time.
At any time?
Yeah, it still require a majority of the commission to pass. That state law is in effect, so, county commission can all candidate at any time.
At any time. We may use whatever we can.
For any amount between ten and twenty-five.
I was thinking about that in the old discussion. I don't mind that.
What's the state law say, up to, or is it say twenty-five?
It says twenty-five. Increasing it. Ten, twenty-five, so. I don't see why you couldn't do anything in between, but that's-
Mary Ann has passed out a delinquent tax sale schedule.
That's better, we need to-
Father, if you would like to address that, or talk about that?
We need to talk about this.
Working with the delinquent tax attorney and the trustee's office, we put together a delinquent tax sale schedule. It's pretty straightforward. We have, we've set a date for August to sell the, anything that's delinquent in the oh-six, oh-seven tax years, and we have set the months ahead of us, we're going to have a delinquent tax sale every three months. We want to sell two years at a time until we get these things pretty current. Our first one-year tax sale will be June of twenty-nineteen, we'll be selling the twenty-sixteen delinquent taxes at that time, and I thought, I want a delinquent tax sale every year scheduled for June, to sell one year at a time, keep these things current. And three years seems to be kind of the standard for most counties, by the time they're there for three years, it's time to do something with them. We're like to phone calls every day, call the people that are on the list, let them know that these are, that this is coming out. And just off the top of my head, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I think the check I took to the trustee last month was about eighty-one thousand dollars collections. So, I mean, people know that we're going to blow it.
And let me just say that I appreciate that. I mean, we all appreciate that. You know, I speak on my own behalf, but for the sixth district, I don't care if it's being on behalf of the county for taxpayers. And, you know, we own land, I know everybody comes on hard times, and I'm not saying that, but if that were my land, it would prove it so to ten years ago. Pay the taxes, and I think this ought to be done exactly how you've got it set up. And I'm also putting it in the newspaper, advertising it, and letting people, you know, we used to do that, and get money in, but, you know, we got to pay our land taxes.
I'm ahead of it, put it in the paper, looking to give out Wednesday, let everybody know, this sale schedule. And we want to give, we want to let folks know that it's coming, we do not want to sell anybody's property.
Absolutely.
And I've actually got to sit down with some folks and kind of explain the math to them on this, and let them see how they're hurting themselves by letting these people link with. They're having to pay eighteen percent interest on this, and there's nobody that is going to come out to the good paying eighteen percent interest. You know, it will help these people in the long run, it'll make them go ahead and get these paid, and it'll save them a lot of money in the long run, to keep it going.
I appreciate your hard work in that.
Anybody have any other, any other questions?
It's not, we've been battling for a while, I'm sure, by the, by you showed that, we've battled it a few years.
We're going to, we're going to work through it, we're just going to wait and prove it, and it's going to be done. I mean, there's a lot of work to be done, it's going to be a lot of hard work, but we have the special section with the length of tax attorney, he's on board, he's working hard with it, the trustee's office is working hard, I've been working with the mayor's office, too. And we've been looking at addressing the county-owned parcels, and hopefully the commission can address that, you know, with some parcels that were bought at the previous tax sale, decide how you want to sell, and get them sold, and get them back on the tax trump, because the county don't need to be in the real estate business. This, you know, have a, my suggestion is, folks to approve to sell, put them with an auctioneer, sell, and get them back on the tax trump. To me, that's the easiest, most pet drive way, but that's, that's not what our office does, we can't handle any part of that, but.
No, there is a cut in the business, and we're going to leave some of these properties.
Yeah, we, and we have some people that are calling, asking about those things, you know, what I'm saying, you know, you call the mayor's office, and they're working, and I know the mayor's office is working on getting something together to make that happen.
Are you also including businesses?
Personal property does not come over, it's at the trustee's office.
So, confused on this, the most parcels, I think, that we have.
Well, actually, the mayor will have, we actually don't have those at the trustee's office.
I'm talking about the parcels, you said the county bought back, you don't have those?
I could probably, I could probably get those, just from the old deeds and some things, get you those, but the mayor should have a list of all of those. I think at the last tax sale, there was twenty parcels that were sold, and I think the county bought seven, that was in twenty-fifteen, was the last tax sale. I was, and to compare that sale, I went to Campbell County's sale about a month ago, they sold their twenty-fourteen delinquent taxes, they had eighty-two parcels, every parcel sold, county didn't buy back any parcels at all.
Thank you. Hard work. Do you have any other announcement that needs to be brought before this court? No? Okay, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion.
Second.
Okay, voting on voice vote to adjourn the meeting, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried.
Heavenly Father, thank you, Lord, again, for the little days, the blessed coming to the business, we need, we do it, we pray, God, we're doing all that's right, and we know that there's a lot of things that change, a lot of times, but, Lord, we're trying to do what is right, and we ask you, give us the right places to go and talk, and get our people to come together in one mind and one accord, we ask you all, it's the Jesus name, amen.